Good evening and welcome to the October 20th, 2020, virtual village council meeting pursuant to the extended executive order, number 20 dash 69 issued by Governor DeSantis. Municipalities may conduct meetings of their governing boards without having a quorum of its members presently present physically or at any specific location, and utilizing communications media technology such as telephonic or video conferencing as provided by section 120 dot 54 sub 5 sub B2 of the Florida statutes. The meeting will now be opened with a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America
And to the states of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For this October 20th, 2020 virtual council meeting, the Miami Shores Village Council is convening by Zoom as posted on the village's public notice, which also identifies how the public may view, listen, and participate in the meeting. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. The agenda and all supporting documentation are available on the village website. In order to ensure the public has the ability to view and listen to the meeting, the village is broadcasting the meeting through all the usual communication trap channels that are provided when a village council meeting is held fully in council chambers at village hall. You may also listen to the live meeting by calling the dedicated Zoom phone line as indicated in the public notice. To provide a reasonable opportunity for public comments, the village has encouraged the public to submit written comments prior to the start of the meeting using the village's e-comment function. The village clerk will reread e-commerce into the record. Please note, as the presiding officer, I may execute authority to limit the length of time of public comments in the interest of time and to preserve decorum and order. Please note, public comments is not a Q and A forum. Therefore, if you have any questions, please contact individual council members and/or staff prior to or after the meeting. However, all comments will be included as part of the official record for this virtual meeting and will be and will be considered by the village council prior to any action taken. All interested parties are required to abide by all state, county, and local emergency orders and are urged to pers- continue, continue practicing social distancing. If any proposition is being continued or rescheduled, the opportunity to be heard may be at such later date before the village council takes action on such proposition. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Village Attorney Seraphin?
Present.
Village Manager Benton?
Here.
Councilman Brady?
Here.
Councilman Lefredo?
Here.
Councilman Meltz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch?
Present.
Mayor Wagler?
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. We'll move on to e-commerce.
First comment is from Andrea Fleury. I'm concerned with the speed cars are moving in my neighborhood. I live on northeast 104th Street between Second and Fourth Avenue. Since we're close, since we're close to Miami Shores Elementary, St. Rose, and Country Day, the traffic on my street is heavy in the mornings and afternoons. Parents are dropping off their kids. Kids are walking to school on their bikes, scooters, et cetera. We also get drivers from Second Avenue down 103rd, 104th, and 105th Street at an exorbitant speed. After the fatal accident that happened last week on northeast 107th Street, I believe it is prudent for council members to take a closer look at this issue. My neighbors and I have requested to close our street to stop traffic coming from Second Avenue, but unfortunately, it does not get passed. However, speeding is a concern in the neighborhood and a great concern of mine since I have two small children. As an alternative to closing the street, maybe speed bumps could be considered. Thank you for your time, Andrea. Next comment is from an anonymous user. I live in northeast 12th Avenue. We need speed bumps. People speed 40 miles per hour, sometimes Ubers trying to get back out and a lot of times the same residents. We have kids playing, riding bikes. We have joggers and the peacocks. Something must be done. We want money allocated for speed bumps. Here is another anonymous user. Chevrolet salesman constantly brings customers to northeast 4th Avenue Road for a road test involving high speeds. They start right after they turn in front of the police station on 87th Street. Next speaker is from Aaron Stauber, residing at 10155 Collins Avenue. Honorable Commissioners and Mayor, I am writing to you in support of agenda item 8A, specifically the proposed resolution to urge funding for the elimination of septic systems in Miami Shores and connection to sewer. As I know you're all aware, we experienced an unprecedented fish kill and algae bloom last month in Biscayne Bay. This comes on the heels of the news that we've lost over 90% of our seagrass meadows and portions of the bay over the past several years. No one should be shocked by this news. Scientists have been warning us for over 50 years that if we continue business as usual, this was going to happen. The Village of Miami Shores must now act boldly to adopt significant financial commitments to do what is necessary for the community and our environment. Passing this resolution will motivate other municipalities, the county to commence similar programs. Septic tanks simply do not work in Miami Shores due to its high water table, porous limestone substrate, and high concentrations of septics on smaller lots in areas such as Shores Estates. Many of the village's septic systems are proximate to the Biscayne Canal and the Biscayne Bay, creating a heightened urgency to mitigate the harm being caused to these critical waterways. This issue is compounded and made worse by sea level rise. Failing septic tanks also pose a public health threat and can expose people to harmful contaminants and pathogens commonly found in sewage. I support this resolution calling for state and federal funding, but the village should not delay its own investment in this infrastructure. I ask this commission to prioritize septic to sewer conversion for properties in the village that can be connected through the investment of the village's financial resources, such as in the area of Shores Estates. Make no mistake, the seagrass die-off, fish kill, and algae bloom are a clarion call to all of us that we have failed to act responsibly to the environment we inhabit. It is time for you to act in the best interest of your constituents and our community at large. Thank you. And a mayor, this concludes public comments.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 5, 5A.
Approval of the October 6, 2020 village council meeting minutes.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to move that we-
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is 6A, appointments to the code enforcement board. The village clerk's office received a total of five applications for the code enforcement board, which has two vacancies. As indicated in my email to the council this morning, Mr. Daniel Perez has rescinded his application for consideration. Therefore, the council will be selecting two applicants out of the four applications. Applicants selected to such board will serve a three-year term. Before the council proceeds to cast their vote, some of the applicants are in queue to briefly introduce themselves and answer any questions the council may have. In the interest, in the interest of time, we ask that all applicants in queue limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Who's our first speaker? Applicant?
I do see, I see for the Fine Arts Commission, I do see Christopher McGuire here.
Mr. Concejo has already been promoted to panelists.
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead, Rod.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rod Buen Concejo, 9424 Northeast 1st Avenue, Miami Shores, Florida. I live in Miami Shores for 31 years now and I'm happy to seek reappointment for the code enforcement board to continue my service. I am currently the vice chairman of the code enforcement board and I am on this board since 1996. I am seeking reappointment for my last term on this board. It is my passion to continue to serve on this board with the council approval. And with regards to my resume, I am working Miami Dade County Aviation Department as an environmental engineer and deals with compliance regarding the state, local, and federal rules and regulations pertaining to environmental issues. I will be happy for the board to reappoint me again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christopher McGuire.
Mr. McGuire?
You still with us? Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Christopher McGuire. I live at 565 Northeast 101st Street in Miami Shores. Uh, my wife and I have been here almost seven years. Uh, like to extend greetings to Mayor Wagler, all the council people and staff. Uh, grateful for the opportunity to serve my community. Uh, my wife and I are very proud residents of Miami Shores. We've sought ways to get involved in our community. I'm a public school administrator with 25 years of experience. I work well with the public. I um, get along very well with my community members and would like to serve our community. As I mentioned, it would be an honor and a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire.
You're welcome.
There are no further applicants present for the code enforcement board. At this time, the council will be selecting applicants by way of electronic voting using the Zoom polling feature. Please note, when the polling feature has been launched, it will appear on the screen of all meeting attendees, including applicants. Thus, we kindly ask that everyone except for members of the village council disregard this feature during the voting period. I will now launch the poll. Okay. I have received five out of five. Mr. Rod Buen Concejo has been selected to the code enforcement board. However, there is a tie between Mark Hunter and Christopher McGuire with two votes each one. I'm going to launch the poll once more. Please disregard Mr. Buen Concejo's name for this poll. We'll be selecting one applicant at this time. Okay. I do have five out of five and Mr. Christopher McGuire has been appointed to the code enforcement board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Next item is appointment to the Fine Arts Commission. The village clerk's office received a total of five applications for the Fine Arts Commission, which has three vacancies. Applicants selected to such board will serve a two-year term. First applicant present is Brad Schmidt.
Mr. Schmidt?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hi. Yeah, hi, my name is Brad Schmidt. I live at 575 Grand Concourse. My husband and I have lived here only four months, so I know there's a consideration that I've only lived here four months and not a full year uh, for consideration to appointment to uh, a commission or a board. Um, we moved from New York and what I do for a living now is I manage a, I'm, I'm a project manager, but I manage a division of GE Healthcare. But for seven years in New York, we had a high-end fashion business and we are, and I'm a member of the Council of Fashion Designers of America. And I, the reason I applied to be on the board was to learn more about the community, to be involved. Um, and yeah, I just really uh, jump in and try to um, do things that are good for the community. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Michael Stock.
Mr. Stock?
Okay, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and thank you for what you all do. I am currently a member on the Fine Arts Commission, although we haven't met in the past six months. And uh, I would like to be reappointed because there are obviously challenges ahead of us and uh, we, I would like to see what we can do. Uh, I am uh, been in concert production in the past. I am currently an employee at WLR and Radio, doing amongst other things, producing a folk music radio show. So I do have a lot of contacts within the community and the, the music field. And I think that's, that's all right now.
There are no further speakers for the Fine Arts Commission.
I have a question for Mr. Stock.
Yes.
And Mr. Stock, um, you think it would be helpful if we made available to the Fine Arts Commission the Zoom feature that we're using in limited purpose throughout the shores? So that you all, I know I, I in, respect Mr. Schmidt's enthusiasm, but I know that the COVID has really cramped a lot of our style. Do you think that having a Zoom availability will help you all to have meetings?
I think that's probably the future. We have to incorporate it. And we also have to start partnering up with other arts organizations to have a more, I mean, I don't know if this is going to happen, but this is what I would like to bring to the board of partnering with other organizations throughout South Florida to bring more arts to uh, via Zoom to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question, Mr. Lefredo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, Madam Mayor?
Uh, Vice Mayor?
I, I did want to take a chance to say uh, to Michael Stock, thank you so much over the years for your fantastic service to the Fine Arts Commission. We really all appreciate it. You are in the background of every um, concert and event that I go to. And I want to let you know that no, no matter what happens with the new vote, we really appreciate your, your service. It's been outstanding. In fact, the whole board has done a great job. And so we're ready for you to ramp up and go again.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you very much, Alice. And uh, I just forgot what I was going to say. I, 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 I have been on the board for a few years, so I understand if you want new blood on there. Uh, but I'm, I'd be willing to help regardless of what, you know, to help the community.
Great. Thank you very much. I think we're ready, Madam Clerk.
Okay, I will now launch the poll. Remember, you will be selecting three applicants. Okay, I have five out of five. The following applicants have been selected. Tia Bowman, Louis Crump. Wait a second. I have five out of five. One, two. Yeah. Tia Bowman, Louis Crump, and Michael Stock have been selected to serve on the Fine Arts Commission.
Thank you, Alberto.
Michael, I told you being my former roommate wasn't going to hurt your chances.
Well, I'm at it, Tom. I want to thank you for earlier today, so uh, thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Next item is 7A, a resolution of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, approving and authorizing the village manager to execute the lease surrender and termination agreement with the current leasing of Miami Shores Country Club and the management agreement for the management of the country club. Step on this item as the village manager.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. You have in your pocket a, a memo for me that outlines uh, what Mr. Seraphin and I have been working on quite extensively for the last number of months. As you know, we brought before the council a, a list of items that professional course management wished to have in a, an agreement, management agreement moving forward. Uh, after much negotiation and back and forth, we have now come up with a uh, a management agreement and a lease surrender and termination agreement that has been agreed to by both parties. And also in your packet, it's a resolution that will authorize me to execute these two documents. Um, we have uh, Mr. Lopenzina and Mr. Posey, the general manager of the club with us. And if there's any questions that any of us can answer, we would be happy to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any comments from the council or questions?
Click on it. Right next to the mute.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Uh, Mr. Meltz, Councilman Meltz, pardon me, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I actually, I'd like to invite Alberto and Johnny if they want to have some comments, if they want to give us a, um, their position to what they believe um, um, the current um, maybe the environment is for the country club and what they look forward to hopefully achieving and within the term of this agreement.
Um, I think Johnny has a little trouble with the mute. Uh, so I'll, I will jump in, Mr. Meltz. Um, the conditions uh, for our business have been uh, surprisingly good on the golf side since we reopened back in late April. Uh, much to our surprise, the number of rounds have held steady in spite of the fact that we are dealing with only one golfer per cart and thus our um, inventory is effectively cut in half. Um, but during the summer months, we have done well. Uh, food and beverage has been a disaster, unmediated. Um, we are cautiously, cautiously optimistic. Um, if uh, the pandemic does not get worse, that business will remain steady. There's a big question mark as to what's going to happen in our season. We're heavily dependent on uh, rounds from snowbirds, visitors, hotel business, and groups. Um, and that is, remains to be seen what's going to happen there. Um, the results of our membership campaign have been mixed uh, to date. We have only renewed about 55 to 58% uh, of memberships. There's a large portion of people who are either seasonal or that uh, come late in December that have not rejoined. We have a significant contingent of Canadian members. There's a question mark, we've been in touch with them, with, there's a question mark whether they are going to come uh, to Florida this winter or not. Um, the border with Canada is closed. The majority of them drive. Uh, so there's a question mark whether they're going to be here. So although we can say that we have been very pleasantly surprised uh, over the last few months in terms of the number of rounds we have played, we are concerned as to what the future is going to bring. Um, we have reopened our restaurant for indoor dining. Um, business is a fraction of what it used to be. And catering, which accounted to, for about 50% of our old food and beverage business, is non-existent at this point. Um, we are being very cautious uh, booking events going forward. Um, we don't want to become the centerpiece of what not to do. Uh, we're going to be responsible. We're going to be protective of our customers as well as our employees. So we're being very, very cautious as to the business we book. Um, we're doing very small um, golf events uh, and very, very small um, carried events we're booking at this point. So, so, social events, uh, bar mitzvahs, weddings, kinses, things of the sort are really not doable at this point in this environment, really. So we'll see what happens with um, with the pandemic and we'll see what people do, whether we have a season or we don't. Um, uh, as I said, uh, we were pleasantly surprised before and we hope that we will be again.
Thank you.
Uh, let me, uh, let me add a couple of comments. Can you hear me, everybody?
Yeah.
You can.
Yeah, first, uh, let me, the village manager, Tom Benton, and the village attorney, Richard Seck, their cooperation helped in making it possible for us to continue, uh, at least for the next year. Uh, it's an uncertain time. Uh, we're going to do the best we can. I want to assure the village, the residents that the state of Maine, for the golf course, the level of service and the quality of the, of our food w- will continue as it has in the past. And when it's safe and when the restrictions are lifted, uh, we hope to get back business as normal. Uh, let me just say, uh, we have been pleasantly surprised at rounds. Uh, it's basically local and it's in, in our straight, much less expensive. But it seems like one of the effects of the pandemic has been people working at it or maybe at their job or at a business or when not a lot of activities are going to the stores and playing golf. So that's been a pleasant surprise. And, and while the grounds are up, uh, we have to, we concern ourselves now with the season and we have seasonal rates and where the tourists will visit. So hopefully, the, the next three or four will be given reports to the village manager uh, monthly. You'll know what we're doing. Uh, and you'll know compared to last year. And uh, as soon as this pandemic is over and as soon as we can get a vaccine and as soon as we can get back to being safe by congregating uh, and doing affairs and playing golf with two people on a cart, the better it'll be and, and the more optimistic. But I, I do appreciate the efforts on, on the village's part to possible for us to stay. And we'll use our best efforts uh, to make it work and uh, and keep you well appraised of, of how we're doing as the season goes on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Um, we appreciate your comments. Are there any more questions or comments from the council?
Madam Mayor, may I just follow up with my comments on that?
Yes, Councilman Meltz.
Thank you. And, and just to, to frame the picture, um, the way I see it is that this is a five-year agreement with renewable one-year options on PCM's uh, side. Meaning after the first year, if they choose to separate, they can. We cannot terminate. It's a five-year agreement on our end. And I hope the fabric and the environment does support a, a full five-year term. Um, and so we're, we're dealing with a possible um, extension or, or a new negotiations in five years. I think the partnership, partnership has been great. Um, and I hope if things do get difficult, we can rely upon PCM to stick it out. Uh, because you know, we heard our residents, we heard them clear. They look at the country club and the way that PCM has operated it as an amenity and, and a, an unbelievable contribution to the community. So let's hope that this does last a full five years. In a perfect world, I wish we could still receive over $200,000 in revenue each year uh, from PCM or through PCM as a result of the golf course. Maybe we'll start seeing some more revenue payments in year three. Uh, my understanding is we will not see anything in year one and two. Um, and the other way we have to look at it for the residents who are listening and watching is that this amenity, this what has been called the jewel of the community, will cost us uh, over $200,000 a year. And I'm willing to vote for this. I'm willing to ratify and, and accept the agreement because I'm confident in PCM's ability to continue operation, to make it a, a continued benefit to our residents and to Miami Shores. And so I, I would, I hope the rest of the council will be in agreement on that. And I do specifically want to thank Mr. Benton, Mr. Seraphin. I know there was countless hours spent with PCM. I want to thank you two gentlemen for appearing here and as you always have in the past, in support of moving forward. Thank you all.
Thank you much. Thank you very much, Councilman Meltz. Your comments are greatly appreciated. Do I have other comments from council? Uh, Councilman Lefredo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Councilman Meltz for his leadership on this issue back. I think it was Mayor June when he brought it forward. And I, I really want to commend him for his leadership. And I, I really want to commend him for his leadership in sticking it out. But I also want to thank the village manager and the village attorney and Mr. Posey and Mr. Lopenzina for notwithstanding that they've locked horns many times over the years, how they sat down, they were flexible, and they worked out an agreement that we all can live with. And I really want to commend them for that. I just, I, I have tremendous admiration for that. I also want to ask them, because we're not out of the woods yet, as I keep saying, that if flexibility is needed in the future, that they'll at least be willing to listen to flexible results or flexible things that may need to be done. Anyway, that's all, and I support the measure, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Meltz. Vice Mayor Birch.
Yes, I, I, I think, I'd like to thank Councilman Meltz for his summary of what's going on here for our residents and the fact that this agreement will be more expensive. However, I would also like to, because we see Mr. Serafin and Mr. Benton frequently, but we don't often see Mr. Lopenzina and Mr. Posey. I'd like to say that my sentiment during all of our over 300 public comments about the club was possibly as much about the two of you and your management capabilities and style and your ability to make our residents and those who come from without our community to feel welcome. So I would like to, to give you that incentive to continue and to make sure that this agreement goes for all concerned as, as best as possible. I want to thank you for the negotiation and the, and the long and tireless effort you've put into this. I know that it's a little scary for all of us and we, we acknowledge that, but we feel confident in the agreement, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work on this matter, we appreciate it. Thank you, Meltz, for your, Councilman Meltz, for your leadership. Madam Clerk, we need to take a roll, or do I have a motion? Pardon me, do I have a motion in favor of this item?
I'd like to, I'd like to move, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the resolution.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Lefredo. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Lefredo.
Yes.
Councilman Meltz.
You're muted, Jonathan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Birch.
Yes.
Mayor Wagler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 8A, discussion and possible action on developing and passing a council resolution urging dedicated federal and state funding allocations for septic-to-sewer conversion projects in Miami Shores Village. This item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Alice Birch.
Vice Mayor Birch, you have the floor.
We don't have to actually pass the agreement itself, we just passed the resolution. Is that all we have to pass? I'm just asking.
Yes, the resolution on the country club?
Yes.
Yes, that resolution approves and authorizes Tom to execute both agreements.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this item came to us, actually, all of us, as a publication from the city of Miami. It was a resolution that they put together to try to raise awareness with both federal and state funding legislatures to try to make sure that we are continuously, I would like to say continuously, pushing the idea that this issue of septic sewer conversion is one of the, the primary directives that I think that we have as elected officials. And so I thought that if Mr. Serafin had a little time to word this in such a way that was particularly appropriate for Miami Shores, that sending this out and giving solidarity with other cities is a very important way to go forward, even though it's just a resolution. So I'm asking my fellow councilmen what they think about a resolution like this, understanding the limitations of, of that, of a document, but also staying on the radar screen, that's my idea. So I'd be happy to hear what others have to say.
Thank you. I'll start here, Vice Mayor Birch, thank you for bringing this forward. I have a question for you. Do we know how many other municipalities are putting forth such a similar resolution? And the reason I ask that question is because I find that we're better in numbers when we're as small as we are. So is this a county-wide effort?
You know, I'd like to ask Madam Clerk, you put these out and sometimes we receive them from other cities and sometimes we don't. So not every city has the, the, the policy that they will send their resolutions out to other cities. So I really don't know the answer to that, Madam Mayor, but I would expect that there will be more. As you and I both have worked with the League of Cities, the Miami-Dade League of Cities, to try to coalesce some of those who are on septic tanks, those cities that have the urgent need. I, I'm particularly interested in sending ours out to them so that they can get their ball rolling in terms of the people that they know in both federally and statewide that can help to keep this issue in the forefront. You know, one of the, one of the things about this time is that it's a very hard time to get cooperation amongst, we're having a hard enough time cooperation with, cooperation within our municipality itself. And so I think it's going to be a while before we have a consensus among cities. But it is a true consensus that's needed, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions for, and I'm in support of the item, by the way. Is there any, are there any other comments or questions for Vice Mayor Birch from the council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Attorney Serafin, yes.
If I understand the item, it's a request for a consensus from the vice mayor that we should adopt the proposed resolution for, to include Miami Shores language and bring it back for a vote by the council.
Right.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And thank you for laying that out for me, Attorney Serafin.
What am I supposed to do?
Do I have a, do I have a motion?
So I'd like to move the item, Madam Mayor?
Sorry, do we have a consensus? I'm sorry, okay, wait a minute, slow down. Vice Mayor Birch, yes, what would you like to say?
So I would like to, to move the, the item as a resolution to be drafted and brought back to council.
Okay, correct, thank you. Do I have a second?
I would second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item 8B, discussion and possible action regarding Hurricane Irma FEMA appeal. Staff on this item is the village manager.
Mr. Manager.
Yes, ma'am. You have in your pocket a memo from me that outlines a, an appeal to FEMA over our Hurricane Irma submissions that we did back in 2017 when Irma struck the South Florida area. As you can see, we have three projects that FEMA has finally gotten around to and has reviewed. They total a little over $1.3 million. And of that $1.3, FEMA has obligated, meaning they would agree to reimburse us $862,961. So that leaves $481,627 on the table. And we have been going back and forth, as you know, for years over this. And there's a new team up there now. And so they have said that in order to, to obtain that $481,000 and change, that we need to file an appeal. Mr. Serafin has looked and done the background, if you will, on who best to assist us with this appeal. And we have come up with a firm of Baker Donaldson, specifically an attorney named Ernie Anderson that works for that firm. He has a lot of success in getting these appeals through FEMA's process, which is very lengthy. And so for that reason, I have brought this to council and asked that you all authorize us to proceed with a, forward with the appeal and with a cost not to exceed $45,000 at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Councilman Lefredo.
I have a question, Madam Mayor. If we file the appeal, will that mean, will that hold up the dispersal of the other $800,000?
I don't believe so, because I don't know when we're going to get the dispersal of the other money. We've asked for it, the state has that money, the FEMA has given it to the state. And I don't know what the state's position is about, about giving a, a partial payment. In addition to these three items, we have two other proposals pending with FEMA too that are, that are much larger sums of money. So I don't know at this time what the state's position is going to be. We have asked them to provide us that amount of money. We haven't had a response yet of what it's going to be, if they're going to give it to us or not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lefredo. Do I have any other comments or questions from the council with regard to this item? Councilman Meltz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at the cost of the attorney's fees not to exceed $45,000. So as we had talked about years past, you know, whenever you get into any sort of appeal or litigation, you always worry that your costs could be exorbitant and could eat up whatever you expect for a monetary recovery. So I'm comfortable if our cap is $45,000 that we could pay in fees. That's only 9% of what the possible recovery is, is what we're owed, $481,000. And if we're confident, Mr. Benton and Mr. Serafin, that, that we are on good grounds, in other words, that we didn't do anything wrong, that we're confident based on our own, not audit, but review and, and we follow procedures within higher shady contractors or everything within our control was solid, that I am absolutely in favor of going after the money that, that it's really been taken out of the pockets and pocketbooks of our residents by, by FEMA, so go get them.
Thank you, Councilman Meltz. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Serafin.
I just wanted to put on the record, Ernie Abbott is not just somebody that we pulled out of thin air. Ernie Abbott is former general counsel of FEMA. He's got two degrees from Harvard, including Harvard Law, and he knows the stuff like the back of his hand. So we feel pretty good about our case, about our attorney. And I would be surprised if the appeal held up anything that was otherwise going to happen. So, you know, we, I'm, I'm fully behind.
Thank you, thank you, that's actually helpful information. Any other comments or questions? All right, I'd like to say it's Mr. Benton, I know this is something you've been working on since I got here. It's been a difficult push and pull, so I do appreciate, I know it's been frustrating, so I really do appreciate all the push that you're putting forth on this effort, this is important, so thank you. So do we have consensus to move forward with hiring an attorney for the purpose of appealing the FEMA decision? Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the, the item 8B, taking that action.
Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item are announcements. There are vacancies on two village boards, Country Club Advisory Board and the Recreation Advisory Committee. If you're interested in serving, applications for board vacancies can be found on the village website and will be accepted through Friday, October 23, 2020. The next meeting of the village council will be held on November 3, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Please note, any traditional Halloween activities can be high-risk for spreading viruses. The CDC and the Miami Shores Village Council recommends skipping trick-or-treating due to the fact that it's a high-risk activity. Please visit our social media pages to learn about alternative ways to celebrate Halloween this year, such as virtual Halloween pet costume contest, virtual pumpkin carving contest, and also family movie night. Also, please join the Miami Waterkeeper Organization for a virtual informational session on best management practices concerning various ways the community can help prevent Biscayne Bay pollution. The session will be held on Thursday, October 29, 2020 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Meeting credentials will be presented by the communication specialists via social media and the village website. Next item is council comments.
Thank you, I'm going to start off tonight because I do want to reiterate what Madam Clerk just mentioned with regard to Halloween and trick-or-treating. The council as a whole, the last time we met, we talked about this and we really are urging people to find alternatives for celebrating Halloween at home, because we are still experiencing the fallout from this pandemic. Likewise, I'd like to reiterate that we are still in the middle of this pandemic and we see the numbers are rising in places, so we are, I want to really encourage people to continue to social distance, wear your mask in, in the hopes that you're being considerate of not just yourself, but your neighbors and those, and your loved ones. So please, 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 if you can, find alternatives this Halloween. Secondly, I want to just say, on the verge of this election, I want to encourage everyone, no matter the outcome, to engage in civil discourse and be civil to one another. You know, doesn't matter the outcome, we still got to be each other's neighbors, so let's pay attention to that. And go out and do your duty to vote, no matter who you vote for, but please do it with respect to one another. The next time we have a meeting, well, this will be almost finished, so I just want to reiterate how important it is to respect each other going forward in this process. Thank you. With that, further comments from the council? Vice Mayor Birch.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two items that are being considered by the county that we have been mentioning and talked about, so I wanted to tell you about that. So because in this spirit of cooperation with the county and other cities about septic-to-sewer conversion, number one is that, I asked the clerk and she very kindly found out that the county commission will be considering a resolution to ask the state legislature, and this would be a priority ask for them, that to ask that PACE be allowed to give septic-to-sewer conversion money. Now that is big, because as we know, the pushback we have from this conversion, it's very expensive for the homeowner. So that would be a really huge open door. So as we speak to our colleagues throughout the county and our council people, it'd be a good thing to mention. The second thing they're considering, which is interesting, because it has to do with our discussion about fertilizer use, is a much tougher fertilizer ordinance than we were able to pass. We passed a resolution about fertilizers. And by the way, staff, our communication staff and our communications person, Jessica Fliatus, has done a great job getting the word out about that, but, and many other things. But I, I do want to mention that that's under consideration by the county commission and we, each municipality would be in charge of enforcing it. So it's something to consider, something to know, I wanted to mention that. The other thing, I wanted to just do a little commercial message for the Miami Shores, Greater Miami Shores Chamber of Commerce Haunted Hustle 5K. So you can register for this and you can, at any time you wish, complete that 5K. And it's, Audrey Edmondson, the commission chair, has donated to this and to help our chamber out and to help our chamber do an event that should be enjoyed by all. And so I encourage all my colleagues and the people out there to consider being part of the Halloween Hustle. So there was that.
So there was that. And my thanks to all these candidates who've been putting their name in and to Madam Clerk for, I actually got all the votes in this time. You notice it wasn't just four. All five, I just actually got those done, and I appreciate your forbearance on my technical difficulties. So, and, and thank you also for Madam Clerk, I mean, for Madam Mayor, that the Miami Shores Community Alliance is a sponsor of the Haunted Hustle. So I'd like that to be a success and everybody to keep that in mind. Okay, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Lefredo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one point on the fertilizer. I was hoping to bring the fertilizer ordinance to the council at the next meeting, or at least a proposed one, so I just keep that in mind. The other thing, I want to thank everybody for their hard work tonight and the candidates for coming out. I also want to echo what the mayor said about civil discourse and respecting other people's divergent views. And lastly, as you know, I do some family law, and I had a situation come up today in my practice where I was floored to find out. I had a hearing tomorrow. I called my client. She has the COVID. So we're not out of the woods yet. It was, fortunately, it wasn't serious, but we're not out of the woods yet. This thing is, they said it's going to come back in the fall. And so we have to be very careful and practice social distancing and all the measures everybody is saying, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman Lefredo, for your wise words. Councilman Melz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to take a minute or two and talk about speeding and send our thoughts and prayers to the families affected by the tragedy on Sixth Avenue last week. And I want to also let the residents know that those who have sent emails to us, independent of the e-commerce that we also received today, and those of us, or those of you all who follow us, know we've been talking about this issue. Your mayor, your vice mayor, your other council members are aware of it, and we're working to try and address it. But you must realize, it's something not as simple as flicking a switch. There's so many moving parts. And I'm not, I'm not an apologist for the police department, but you just have to understand that, you know, my, my other job besides councilperson, I know law enforcement, I know criminal law and things related, traffic enforcement. And if you've noticed over the last couple of years, or previous, that we've had other issues within the village with regard to crime. But we haven't had those issues maybe, say, this last year or so, because based on village manager and the other administration, as long as the police chief and the department, they've been focusing on violent crimes, such as home invasions, such as property crimes related to burglaries of your home or your cars. And there's only so many resources that go around. It reminds me of, I guess it's a, Madam Mayor, is it a fable? That little guy who puts his finger into the dam? I think it's a fable. I don't know what it's called. Okay. But in any event, like, that's what I feel like, and the administration and law enforcement, even for a village of our size, is sort of like that, where you're always reacting. Please know that both the council, as well as the administration and the police department, are taking steps and doing things to address this speeding problem within the village. As you may have seen today, there was speed enforcement out there. We're going to, and I think I speak for the other council members, insist and request that that continues. We'll talk about resources. I've also already met with Mr. Benton and given him some ideas that I have from my own practice, the things that we can try to institute to, to, you know, maybe not alleviate, but to diminish and reduce the amount of speeding, which is primarily done by non-residents. So things are happening behind the scenes. We hear you. Please be patient. I looked in the next meeting or two to put it back on agenda like we previously did to give everybody an update. And hopefully that we all can work together and make our village known as a safe place for both residents and people who are driving through. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Melz. Councilman Brady to close it out.
Well, thank you so much, council. Thank you to staff for all the hard work that went into the items that we were able to clear and, you know, set some path forward for some of our critical institutions tonight. So thank you. I did want to mention, again, you know, my, I also, my, you know, thoughts and prayers go out to the, you know, the families impacted by that tragedy. And I did want to thank the, the police department has been out doing serious traffic enforcement around, you know, in the morning, taking the kids to school. You could see them out there trying to control it. I would just ask our fellow, you know, neighbors and residents to, to be patient and to be careful when you're, you know, when you're driving yourselves as well, you know? Don't contribute to the problem. And I did want to thank all the hard work over the years of Vice Mayor Birch and pushing for improvements for pedestrian bicycling safety and that the village actually was awarded an award, a core award by the Florida Department of Transportation for the efforts that Miami Shores has made toward improvements in pedestrian and bicycle safety. So thank you for that. And, you know, finally, did just want to reiterate what the other council members were saying to, you know, do not give in to the pandemic fatigue, stay vigilant, be smart, be safe, and look for some really unique and different ways to celebrate, expose your kids to Halloween this year. And, you know, please do not go out trick-or-treating and participating in large gatherings. But thank you all for just another great counseling and moving a lot of important items tonight.
Thank you. Any other closing comments? All right. Thank you again, Madam Clerk, for all your hard work in setting up the voting abilities for us. We appreciate it. There being no further business of the council, and all hearts and minds being clear, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good night. Be safe.
Good night all. Good night.
Night.